We're not recommending a rate increase if that's the question.
That's what I'm...
Right.
We're not recommending a rate increase.
Okay.
What did you say?
No rate increase.
No, say it again.
No rate increase.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-five, fiscal year 2016 budget amendments.
Say.
Alright David, what you got for us?
Well, this is a year-end budget amendment to move, we're not asking for additional dollars, we're just asking to move dollars around to where they are, where there are excess in one account to make up for the deficits in the other accounts, and there is a number of them before you. I can read these to you, or you can...
We have them.
Yes, so we're not raising the budgeted dollar amount, we're just moving dollars from where we have additional dollars left over into accounts that are in a deficit so that we can close the year out.
Any questions?
What's the total amount, the ballpark David? Total amount that we have to move?
It's several million dollars because we have one that's just in the capital projects alone that covers six million in the debt funding. So it's, it's a, to give you a dollar amount, I'd have to get my calculator because it's, it's in the seven, eight million dollar range.
This includes water and sewer, or this is just general?
This is just general fund.
General fund, we have that.
Well, it's in the general fund, it's in the debt service fund, so there's more than, more, we have two in the, there's one in the capital project fund, there's in the debt fund, so we're talking, uh, at least three funds, two funds outside of the general fund.
You should've had more time to look at that.
It is, it's pretty standard at this time of year to be able to do this, this isn't anything out of the ordinary, there isn't anything in here that we're just, for example, we've got personnel services where some departments had some excess overtime, so they need, they ran out of their personnel services dollars in overtime, so they have to transfer through a budget amendment into cover the personnel services from the contracting side, supplies and expenses, so it's, we're just moving dollars from one account to another at year-end, which is a pretty standard item here, I've looked back in the last four years, it's, it's a very big journal entry from an accounting standpoint, but we're not overspending any monies at all, it's just moving dollars from one, one account to one ledger item to another.
And that may, that may be, but that gives us information, it gives us knowledge of where we're transferring the monies from, and this person, I don't think we've had time to look at it enough. Have y'all had time to look at it this night?
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
Got it. Routine item number twenty-six, adoption of fiscal year 2017 budget.
Say.
Real quick, so that we're in concert with one another, I think we've, we've gone back and forth over the issue that, that, I know that there are things that we still have to bring back and communicate to you all that is in you all's legislative hold account, some of those things that are very important to me, specifically is the jobs program that I've discussed with you all that has been causing my attention, that you all want some more specific information as of to what we will do with that jobs program, and I've communicated to you guys why it is important on our end to have a, a third-party administrator to give us the flexibility and also the ability to make a larger impact with the capacity of that funding. So, if there is something that, that we can do internally through parks and rec, or through community development, or public works, where that jobs program has to only come through those departments, we will do that, but the best route that we can go that's also legal is to have another partner that we administer some of that program with. That is still very important to me, and I know it was pulled out of, of this budget that, that we have to vote on tonight. But what was most important to me right now is the crisis that we have and that we have had in regards to our starting pay of our police and firemen in several areas. As I have outlined, there are four major positions within the police department and two major positions within the fire department, that we basically are in a non-competitive position as it relates to our starting pay. I direct the chief of police and the chief of fire to do the best that they can with hiring, recruiting, and retaining young men and women that go out every day to risk their lives for our police department and the fire department. We're not in the ballgame to compete, I don't have the tools in the toolbox to compete with other places. We continue to train them, they continue to need the resources. We have gone back and forth in regards to these pay increases being in two tiers or one tier. The bottom line of it is that you guys have the power today to make us competitive today through your council vote. The commitment that I'm asking you all for is a commitment going forward to us, because the commitment is not just for this year, the commitment will be for the next year that we go through this budget every year, in the police and the fire departments, because it is going to increase those salaries a lot, 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 lot. We have got to be competitive, and again, we have a personnel pay crisis. The last issue that we have discussed back and forth is cash flow. The cash flow is net amount of cash and cash equivalents moving into and out of a business in this regards to budget. We are two hundred thousand dollars off of doing what I am asking and what you guys communicated to me you wanted to do. The bottom line of that is, that comes out to eighteen to twenty-four thousand dollars a month, and if we don't have the flexibility of, David Whitaker, who's the CFO, does not have the ability to transfer funding out of our large fifty-six million dollar budgets that will equate to eighteen to twenty-five thousand dollars a month, surely he does not need to be our CFO. The bottom line of it is, the money for this funding is there, I'm asking you today to make a commitment to paying our police officers, men and women, and our firemen what they deserve and what they expect to be paid for us to be a competitive city. So, my request is, I, I have everything that, that you all made changes to the budget. Again, I ask you so that we're in concert, because I do see the money in the budget, but I do know that you all had concerns about us doing it in one tier or two tiers, and I'm asking you because we're about to go out and recruit for officers and firemen, and I don't need to have the ability to direct these chiefs to go out and recruit at one level when we're step-tearing or piecemealing this pay plan in increments. I need the ability to compete today, and I'm asking you for your vote so that we can be competitive today with what we pay our firemen in those areas. With everything else that we discussed in this budget that's in legislative hold to discuss later, but this issue with our police and firemen, we can't wait to 2017, we can't do it in two tiers, we need to be competitive to this, to this, to this, to this, to this. Dr. Thomas, you know, you've probably been on city council the longest. Men and women do a lot, and I'm asking you guys to make a commitment to what we're trying to do, you know, so that we can hold them accountable, we can hire quality folks, and we can consistently do that, and we can consistently not lose people to other municipalities and agencies. I cannot do it without your vote, so I, I have the budget, I, I see what, the money is there, and I'm asking so that if this budget passes, I would like to move on with a one-tiered plan, so I just wanted to tell you all that before you all voted on the budget, because I do see the money is within the budget to do exactly what I've discussed I wanted to do, but I'm not going to do it unless you guys are on the same page.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make some comments. Overall budget for the city of Meridian, what we're discussing here tonight, it's fifty-six point six million dollars. General fund, eighty-eight point four million dollars, is that correct David? And that's the last figures I received. Out of the general fund, there's one point two million dollars in there for salary increases. I think the council as a whole has agreed that salaries that the mayor has recommended will be paid, but will be paid in two payments. In the month of July, sales tax for the city of Meridian was down almost one hundred thousand dollars according to the state legislature. It was one month, we were down near to one hundred thousand dollars in July. I was given to that by a prominent member of legislators, I assume he's correct. The insinuation that we're, will do something because of fear and indecision is not the way to negotiate as far as I'm concerned. So I'm going to stay by what I recommended, these guys will get their raise, they'll get half of it now, October first, they'll get the other half, that will include one point two million dollars. The taxpayers of the city of Meridian will give in salary increases out of the general fund budget, one point two million dollars. We had a total increase in the general fund budget of one point three million. These are the figures I was given today. So we're taking a total, almost a total amount of increase in the general fund budget according to the figures I received, and it'll go into salaries. So to think that we're not giving raises, I know they would like to get it all at one time, I know they would. The way we're going right now, it's sales tax and things like this, they will get the raise, I, I'll vote for the raise. We may have to make some other cuts along as we go if this sales tax deficit continues. We cannot undergo a hundred thousand, nearly a hundred thousand dollars a month decrease in sales tax, we just can't do it. So, we're not talking about cutting salaries, we are talking about paying salaries in two payments, they will get their raise, but it won't be all at one time according to this budget. And again, fear and indecision had nothing whatsoever to do with the decision of my decision, we discussed this for over a month now.
Ms. Houston, if I could?
Mm-hmm.
I got your, I got, we got your email yesterday, about ten yesterday morning, and I read through it, and it triggered a couple of points I wanted to make, because I knew the police department, some of the members of the police department were going to be here, and I knew some of the members of the fire department were going to be here. And first of all, I want to say to both police and fire, we respect your service, we appreciate your service, we appreciate the work that y'all have done in working at eleven eighty-one and up, we appreciate it, and we believe in you. And it's been the, and the council can stop me if I'm wrong, but it's been the position of the council, since I'm speaking to you directly, it's been the position of the council to increase your pay when we came in here year one. We've discussed it several times over the last three years, and now it's being proposed to us, that was actually a proposal by both police and fire, if you can remember, for budget year fifteen, fiscal year fifteen, and we instead moved forward and made cost of living increases. So again, for police and fire, we appreciate your service, and our position hasn't changed since day one that we walked in here. For some of you that are getting increases, those increases are based on what has been proposed to us by both the mayor and the department heads, the police chief and the fire chief. As it relates to how your salaries and these future adjustments will compare, it's been stated several times that the numbers are consistent with the Mississippi State University study, the comprehensive study. I encourage you as employees, and I encourage citizens, not just police and fire, all departments and citizens, to, to contact this administration or financing records or the city clerk, I think, of the City of Meridian, Mississippi Comprehensive Compensation Study of 2016. Look at where your salary stands, where your salary was before the jump, and then look at some of the other numbers in there, there's an average mean, there's an average medium, there's a Mississippi state average, based on those individuals that responded to the survey, and there's also a national average. Not just police, not just fire, all departments, all of your cities, if you're an employee of the city of Meridian, or will be an employee of the city of Meridian, your salary and what your salary looks like in other cities is in this book, I, I guarantee, I guarantee you, be very recommended reading. I was going through the email, I looked at some, mayor mentioned some issues regarding turnover, he mentioned some issues regarding low morale, we totally agree. And why, while increasing salaries is not going to automatically increase morale and automatically increase turnover, we believe that there's, there's some other work that should be done to remedy some of the internal and external issues y'all have within those departments, citywide. An adequately trained workforce, mayor mentioned inadequate trained workforce and the fear and danger, totally agree. Residents of the citizens, citizens as you mentioned in paragraph four, residents of the city are concerned about the safety of their families as well as they should be, everyone's been concerned, and we appreciate the work that y'all have done in trying to lower those concerns, but we recognize those are still concerns. Mayor conceded that we have done an outstanding job in managing taxpayer dollars, and we appreciate that compliment, and we'll continue to do it. But we also need to set out a long-term plan as a how, 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 gap consistent with what the numbers from the Stenness Institute study actually say. Again, we appreciate your service, our position has not changed, we are glad to move forward and at least assist you, or attempt to assist you, to the extent that has been recommended to us.
Let's, let's just be thankful that we're in the city, that we don't have the problems that a lot of cities have. There's a lot of cities like, in, like Nashville and other cities that are having, having to a cutback, there's a lot of cities that are having to close their police departments down, smaller cities, so let's just be thankful we're not in that situation. As I've said many a time, it's hard to make up for fifteen or twenty years of knowledge, you know what I'm saying, we've, we've run through this for fifteen, twenty years, since I've been here in Meridian for twenty-five years, I've heard this, that we've had this problem. Let's be thankful we're addressing it now.
President Houston, I would like to say one other thing, Dr. Thomas, you talked about the one point two million dollars, the, the bottom line of it is, as you all know, that to make up for the fire and the police budget request, the other half a million dollars or so, of course, is coming from Hugh Smith's budget to do a lot of things that we both talked about in regards to the seven and a half million dollar bond issue, and also having the personnel and the staff to continue to demolish houses so that our own program is something that we can handle in-house and not have to pay vendors to do. So, it's not, that request is not all in, in public safety, so...
And I didn't say that. Also, the total amount that the mayor recommended for police and fire salary increases is in the budget, it will just be done in two payments. The total amount that you sent us has been approved by this council. Some of these people get three, five, six thousand dollars.
We gotta vote on it. Ms. Houston? Mayor, we appreciate your, your diligence in, in bringing these things to our attention. I think from, you know, day one, I think we all are on one accord as far as trying to make sure our employees, the police, the fire, everybody, and every year we have went with the, the beat of the drum, and so this year we're doing the same thing. If you remember, at first, I don't know if Mr. Whitaker expressed to you, at first we had cut the whole thing by half, and then after the scut, 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 we put all the money back in there so that you'll be able to do what you wanted to do, it's just that when the information was brought back to us about the decrease in sales tax, this trend, and we don't know if maybe a trend, it might've just been a bad month, and I know, Mr. Whitaker, you look at this stuff every single day, our concern is that we don't want to make promises that we're not able to keep, and since this is something new, this is something huge, this is a big deal, and we want to just make sure that we are doing it the right way, we did put the money back into the budget, trying to move forward with you, with your request, and it may work out that January is just a few months, keep that in mind, October one is just a couple more months until we're into that, that second year, and we can really see and make sure that we are on pace to do exactly what you have requested. So the cuts that were originally made, that, all that money has, as we all addressed, has been put back in there so that we can give these hard-working men that put their lives on the line every single day what they just deserved, it's just a timing thing.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're working with you, we're, we're all on the same page, we all want to get there, and, and we are going to get there, because we're believing that sales tax is going to be even more than we expected, and all will be well, and we just work through this process, so it's in there, we're going to do it, we're going to make it happen, just as you have requested.
Or at least stabilize, sales tax is down for July for a hundred thousand dollars, but I think over the last twelve months, from July fifteen to July sixteen, there was a decrease from about, between six hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over those, over that calendar year.
Based on what we've said, by January or February, the police department and the fire department will receive the total amount of the raises that the mayor recommended.
Can you say it one more time, say it by January or February?
Yes.
Where along there?
Personally, after the shopping season, the sales tax, that's all we're waiting on.
And if we cut some, there won't be salaries.
Correct. That's why we put it back in the budget, that's why we put all the money back in the budget so that we can fund the salaries that you were requesting.
And at the same time, you know, the rest of the city employees, we've got to start considering those folks also, but we had to do this right now because of the problem we had.
Also, it's similar to, to what we did when we did the department head raises and all that, we waited till after the sales tax season, so we knew exactly what we were working with, and we just moved forward, so we, we, we are on the same page, we're getting there, it's just a couple of months before we're actually able to, to really get there completely. So if we can work together on this, we, we, we are all trying to get to the same point.
Just hold on.
It's in the budget. I don't think everybody understands what we're saying here, it had been cut by half, and now we have put the money back in there, just as you have requested, it's just a matter of timing and making it all work and gel as it should.
For the record, this would be our third pay increase since we've all been in office together.
Exactly, from day one.
From day one.
From day one, I did say that, from day one, you, you have been, from day one, we've worked with just about every, everybody, from the little man to the middle man to the high man, and now we're, we are looking at our police and fire, and we will continue, I believe that we'll continue every year to, to look at where we are as it relates to trying to get our employees where we need to be with regard to that study that we paid all that good money for, we didn't just pay money for it just for the sake of doing it, but we have the information, you brought it to our attention, we're doing something about it together, we all are.
Goal for next year is to look at police and fire again, if we're here, look at police and fire again, the rest of the departments that were covered by the study.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-seven, ordinance setting millage rate for the Meridian Separate School District.
What is it?
The, there has been no increase in the millage rate from this year to last.
Hold on just a second. If you all could please exit quietly if you're going to exit, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Whitaker.
The millage rate for the school system, for MCC and for the city, remains the same as year.
May I move approval of the Meridian Separate School District millage rate, which is what?
The school district in total, district maintenance is fifty-five mils, and the debt service is seven point eight-two mils, for a total of sixty-two point eight-two mils.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-eight, ordinance setting millage rate for the city of Meridian.
The millage has not changed for the city of Meridian, it remains the same as it has since FY oh-nine, at fifty point eight-four mils.
So there's no tax increase?
No tax increase.
Say it again real loud?
There are no tax increases in this budget, the millage remains the same at fifty point eight-four mils.
No tax rate increase, the property value went up.
Rate increase, yes.
Right, tax rate, gotcha.
What about the community college?
Community college has remained the same, the support's at three percent, the enlargement's at three, excuse me, three mils, the enlargement at three mils, adult education at one mil, four, seven mils in total.
Did you include that in the separate school district? But we don't have a millage rate on here for the community college on the agenda.
It is an attachment to it.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
It's on the initial, it's on the one, the...
School district?
Yeah, on the school district, on the R twenty-seven, yeah.
Make sure, I'm going to leave mine.
Any other questions? All in, oh, need a motion?
Oh, move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-nine, claim stocket.
Second.
Questions?
Are there any questions on the claim stocket?
You know my questions, and still have the same answer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I presume that was three, two in favor.
In favor, you pay bills.
I'm sorry, I was just making sure she had it. Routine item number thirty, res, 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 certification to the Department of Revenue, the effective date of two percent food and beverage tax.
Move approval, second. Mr. Attorney, there's something we have to do, right?
Yes, sir. Okay. President Houston, resolution extending the date to collect tax from October one to November one, we've been working in conjunction with the city attorney to come up with this date, as well as Department of Revenue, and this is where we've come up with this date, this, this extends it thirty days from October one to November one.
How will the establishments be?
Working with Lordville County Tourism and EMBDC, they'll be working to gradually get all of our businesses, you know, going through the process to collect, 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 collect.
Will they be notified?
How will they be notified?
Yeah, if you're a Christian or you're somebody that this affects, how's you, are we going to be notified?
Well, it'd be a public notice for one thing, the, the tax has already passed to sixty-eight point two percent, this is, just like any other tax, this is like our sales tax being collected, it's, it's a process going to Department of Revenue.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Presentation Agenda Mayor's Report.
First of all, I just want to say to keep firefighter Eric Gestofferson and the police officer Ken Windborn, they're...
Winborn, their family and their friends in your prayers, of course firefighter Gustafson passed away, we...